Good evening. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for October 5th, 2015. Please stand for invocation. And I don't see Bobby, so if Nathan can do the honor.
Let's pray. Father, we're thankful for the opportunity to be here tonight. We pray for the folks that are in South Carolina dealing with their flooding. Pray for their leadership and their community as they try to manage through that process. Pray for the decisions we make tonight and for what's ahead. We pray for our administration and all our departments. Pray that you continue to be with them. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which expands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Nathan. Roll call, please. Counselperson Smith. Counselperson Wadsworth.
Present.
Counselperson Sellers.
Present.
Counsel President Gill.
Present.
Counselperson Julius.
Here.
Counselperson Owen.
Here.
Counselperson Samuel.
Here.
At the record reflect, eight council members or seven council members are present. Two are absent. Counselperson Stavne and Counselperson Webb.
I did hear from Counselperson Webb and he is out of town. So I have minutes to be approved for a regular proceedings on September 21st, 2015.
Motion approved. Second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Can I have the approval of the agenda, please?
Still moved.
Second. Got a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Claims to be approved.
I have a comment or question.
Okay.
And I'm gonna say this and see how you want to proceed.
Okay.
I won't be voting for the claims tonight. And the reason is I'm not really sold on page three of 16. I'm not really sold on the Norton Foundation of $25,000. And I don't know if there's an option to approve the claims and do that separately if you want to take a roll call, or do you just want to put it in? And I won't be voting for that. I'm not sold on it. So I didn't know. Whatever you want to do is fine with me, but I just wanted to know about that.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody had any thoughts on that or not.
It's up to you, counsel. Do you want to remove approval of claims and take a separate vote on that?
Well, I mean, I mean, I don't, one way or another, I'm not voting for it. I don't know who is, but I'm just saying. But I support the, I mean, the claims, but I don't that. So if you want to just approve the claims and let it fall, or you can separate them.
You know, there's a, there's gonna be a couple of other extensions, I think. So you may not, you may want to pull it off of the claims time.
Can we do that big thing in the broker next separate? Or not? What's our options on that?
I think you can.
Well, you can pull that. I mean, you can pull it vote on it separately if you want to.
Yeah.
I'll just make a motion on the claim approval that we pull the $25,000 promotion for the Norton Foundation on page 316. And if the council willing, we will add that as a separate motion to vote on after we do the claims.
Second. Okay, I got a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion or about the claims for Amy, though?
Yes. I mean, I got questions on the claims, but he didn't, he didn't make a motion to approve the claims. He had made a motion to remove one. So we need to vote on that, I think.
All right. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll discuss the claims without the $25,000.
Amy, I had a question on page one.
Okay.
Just what it's for. Under the Police Department, M and M, M and M office products. But it says usage for September.
Lease payment.
Is that like a lease for furniture or something? Yeah, I'm sorry. It's for $1,234 toward the bottom of there.
Yeah. I'm not really sure. I'll have to pull the invoice and look at it. I don't know offhand.
I'm not suggesting do anything with it. I just was curious.
Right.
When it said usage. Understand that.
That is, that is copier, the copier.
The lease payment is copier, yes. Sorry.
Thank you. That helps. Any other questions? Motion to approve with, with the one claim removed.
That's 663-280-76.
How much was it?
Do I have a motion in a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion in a second for the 663-280 and 76 cents. Any further questions? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Now, as far as the matter of the Norton's, I do know, since I sent the email out Friday, I know that Ed and Mike were in support of it. We may want to wait till next meeting to resubmit that claim and take that vote, or we can move forward. But I'm just.
Well, I don't resubmit it.
It was done because nobody responded to the email. Nobody gave any. We had five in support, so it was put on. Do I have to resubmit it? It's already up there. Can't it just be rea-, I mean, how do you? I've already submitted.
Can it just be put back?
We could just change the date to be reflected at the next. Yeah.
Is that all right with, with council to wait till next meeting?
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Report of the clerk. Hold on real quick. The only thing I have
to report is last week, and I'm sure council president will also point this out. We went to the IACT meetings and some of the workshops were good, some of them weren't. I'm just being honest. I think other people would say that, too. But the one I think was most informative was about the AHA and the IRS and the possibilities. That's going to be something very interesting. The Affordable Health Care and how the forms, you know, HR and all them are gonna have to do forms. There can be penalties. I mean, they went into detail by detail. And they're going to be putting that on the IACT website. And as soon as they do, I will download it and make sure everybody gets that information. But all in all, it was, it was very, it was very good.
Okay, unfinished business. We have Amy Deering, the 2015 OR 51 ordinance for appropriation for tax rate passed in the first reading.
This was approved at the hearing last meeting, but I believe an email was sent out with two requests for additions in the general funds. Underneath the Engineering Department, the administrative assistant, too, was increased to reflect the current salary.
What page?
It's on page one of the detail, down at the bottom, under engineer. The 41-535 is going to be 44-304.
What was the reason for that?
That's the person's current salary.
It's just half.
Yes. And then on page 10, there was one other item underneath the Board of Public Works budget. The city Wi-Fi was requested to be budgeted for $8,000. And that was just to keep the Wi-Fi service here at City Hall.
Those were those emails I forwarded you all last week with the back and forth with the IT department and I guess the ones that handle the Wi-Fi.
How much was that, Amy? Eight or 10?
Eight thousand. Uh-huh.
Originally 25 and then we took it to zero and now you're asking.
That's right.
It's just for the, for this building, the city Wi-Fi.
I would think really the city building authority would really pay that. It was this building.
It's always been in Board of Public Works since. I don't know. That's a question for you.
I mean, I'm just saying.
It's a flip of the coin. You know, a lot of services that different departments use, we spread out. So, I don't know. I think that particular one is, is probably better off going to Board of Public Works personally.
Amy, are there any other changes in this?
No.
I'd make a motion to approve 2015 OR 51 on second and third and request a roll call.
I'll second.
Okay, I got a motion, a second to pass 2015 OR 51 and a second and third. Is there any further questions, comments, discussions?
I think there was another email that went out from Chief Hedrick regarding his budget and the Fire Department. Pertained mostly to their Lloyd funding, I think, that was cut almost 300,000 or more than 300,000.
With the emails, I know I had several conversations with Chief Hedrick, which he is here, and I know Amy has. And way that we, it was if the chief, if, I said, is there anything vital before circuit breakers, which he is here. And he replied, no. So I said, after circuit breakers, we can add. I think where the, the problem lied and a lot of that was when we were going through the budget, stuff wasn't all right. We were going by the year-to-date and they didn't purchase things that didn't reflect on our appropriations or our fund balance reports.
Right.
So I think that's how a lot of it got cut out. So I told them, we'll add that stuff in as need. All they have to do is come back and ask if it's needed.
Right.
Just come back and ask.
But if we're.
Is there anything else?
But our Lloyd spending isn't impacted by the circuit breakers. And we've cut all their training and equipment out of that.
But once again, they can come back at the beginning of the year and request it and we can take care of it then. Well, we didn't cut anything out of Lloyd. Amy, that was where each got a pot of money. They had to decide how to spend it, correct?
That's correct.
They actually, he got 100,000 more in his Lloyd than what he would have had, correct?
Than the original discussions, yes.
So we just gave, if he wants to use the bulk of that for training, we just don't, we're not separating it out. Correct me if I'm wrong, Nathan, because you, it was you and Amy.
And we were sent a budget that, that.
It was who?
Was not revenue neutral. It spent more than it brought in on, on that. So we agreed to cut it back.
But it was who that did that? Who decided we were gonna do that?
We did it at that last.
We did it at a meeting.
At a meeting, right here.
That budget workshop and that. I mean, that was that last budget workshop we had.
I was thinking, last time we came, we sat down, there was a separate meeting after that.
No. We had that meeting before that last meeting. There was no meetings after that last public meeting. Other than discussion with Eric, with his, I'm sorry, no disrespect, Chief Hedrick and his concerns with his budget. And then I sent a couple emails out.
And during that meeting, the decision was made initially to give the police 500,000 and the fire 500,000 out of Lloyd and let them make their own priorities. But then we, before we voted, we agreed to increase it to 600,000.
Correct.
And that was, that's when that was done, right here.
Paid the fire truck payment, it was 375.
Right. Right.
Yeah, we wanted to, to raise that because of the lease payment for the fire trucks was included in that.
Exactly.
Does that, did that answer all your concerns? Chief, does that answer all your concerns? You ready for roll call? Yes, please, roll call. Counselperson Smith.
Yes.
Counselperson Wadsworth.
Yes.
Counselperson Sellers.
Yes.
Counsel President Gill.
Yes.
Counselperson Julius.
Yes.
Counselperson Owen.
No.
Counselperson Samuel.
Yes.
And I'm gonna pass this around to you all this time. Amy, you're still up. An ordinance transferring certain funds within the same department.
Okay. This transfer ordinance actually has, needs to be revised to add the bottom two items. These were needs that came through from Planning and Zoning Department for office supplies and uniforms.
So you're pulling from training and getting uniforms?
Yes, and from professional services to office supplies.
Is this the 52?
Mm-hmm.
Motion for 2015 OR 52 on the second and third reading.
I'll second that.
Got a motion, a second to pass 2015 OR 52 in the second and final reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Amy, you're still up. We are having a public
hearing tonight on addition, an ordinance of additional appropriation that passed in the first and second reading.
Yes, no changes since last meeting. This was advertised for a public hearing tonight.
This time, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anybody here that we wish to speak for or against this additional appropriation? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing that, I'm officially closed public hearing.
Motion to approve 2015 OR 53 on the third and final. Second.
I got a motion, second to pass 2015 OR 53 in the third and final. No other further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Move on to new business, which we have Allen Applegate. We also have a public hearing on this. It's an ordinance vacating an unimproved alley between 8th Street and Spring Street and portion of 8th Street between Michigan Avenue and Ohio Avenue, a public right-of-way in, or public way in the city of Jefferson, Indiana.
Thank you, Allen Applegate with Applegate Pfeiffer Pulliam. On behalf of M Fine on Spring LP, which is a, which is a limited partnership owned by, of which the general partner is New Hope Services. As you know, or may know, New Hope acquired the M Fine Building, affectionately known as Industrial Nightmare Building, about eight months ago and has since then been able to acquire the Masonic Building, which is on Lot 12. They're on your drawing, and is under contract to acquire the auto detail business, which is lots 11 and 10 on your, on your drawing there. Last week, we asked for a rezoning and received a favorable recommendation, which will be the next thing on the docket tonight, to rezone these two parcels to DC, which then would match the classification for Industrial Nightmare M Fine Building. Long and short of it, if that zoning is approved, then New Hope or an entity owned by New Hope would own all of this property. I think Department of Redevelopment owns this tip down here. But it would be a contiguous parcel, all zoned the same, to allow the expansion of its proposed project. This is the most recent architectural rendering of, of the project. This is the existing structure here. And if all of this can be approved, it would be an addition of this structure, which a couple of renditions are, this in essence would be added on here. Obviously, this is the existing building that would be refurbished. This would be basically looking from Spring Street to the added area. And as you pass from 10th to 8th, this is, this is 8th here. Currently, this area is grass. The rear portion of it, halfway down this building, is, is, remains paved. The goal for New Hope with the vacation of the alleyway and roadway, as you could see, would be allow a parking and travel pattern around the property. Also, the abandonment of the alley obviously is necessary to allow the expansion of the building. But then 8th would allow traffic to not get out on Spring and to move circularly around, around the building. We, we gave public notice. We put it in the paper, delivered that to Ms. Conlon. And I've not heard any comments or no one's contacted me to discuss it. Obviously, it is a matter for the city council to take into account if, if the circumstances are just and does not impact the ability of other properties to reach a public thoroughfare. Another couple pointers. I think the Department of Redevelopment may own here and own several of these lots because of the sewer interceptors. So we had gone, this is, this is from about a year ago. This, I think, is, this was given to me about Jacoby Tooms and Lands. I think some of that interceptor work, or I know that they're anticipating a cul-de-sac after all of this interceptor work is done in the area. So, you know, it won't necessarily have traffic flowing on to 9th, which is sort of more need to, to have a circular pattern around this building. That's about as much information as, that I have that I can provide to you. I will try to answer some questions if need be. I have Mr. Jim Bosley, I'm the CEO of New Hope, here to answer questions also.
On that, and Mike probably knows better than me, but on that grass area, there's a, there's a pretty big catch basin right in the middle of it. How are you all gonna handle that if you're gonna make that a through street?
The, let's get back to the drawing. At this juncture, and of course, if you abandon a right-of-way, it will go to the center line of the street, each adjoining property. So actually, Department of Redevelopment would pick up half of 8th and the other half would go to the adjoining property owners, which obviously would be New Hope. The, the statute that enables and allows the vacation of streets also indicates that it will not impact utilities in place. Is that catch basin not constructed yet?
Oh, it's right in the middle of it.
Yeah. So any utilities that are in place cannot be affected by a vacation of the right-of-way. So whether it's a, an electric, a sewer, or any other utility cannot be modified. Obviously, if the, if Len or somebody wanted to approach us, I'd be happy to place an easement of record or something to indicate the location of that, of that basin. The intent is not to overtake all of that, but to basically have an access lane around the building and parking.
I got you. I'm just saying, you know, I know that was put in about six years ago because there's an enormous amount of water on that intersection. And that catch basin was put in. I know to alleviate a lot of that, we just.
Well, absolutely.
Keep that in mind.
You know, actually, on a, you know, seven, eight, nine million dollar project, we're real.
Oh, yeah.
And we're real interested in flood control and stormwater mitigation. So I think we're gonna work hand in hand with whoever.
I just wanted to bring it up.
Well, we've, believe me, ever since we went through this process last year, we've monitored that building and all around that building every time we've had heavy rains. And there have been no problems to date. And we've had some pretty heavy rains.
Oh, yeah.
So I don't really think that's a point of concern for us at this point in time.
The, the alleyway that they speak of, now that, that rendering doesn't show the alleyway, but that alleyway that's running, yeah, it, you know, it's been there for years and the city's never maintained it. To be honest, I didn't know it was an alleyway.
I didn't either.
It's gravel, Mike. You know that.
But it was evidently back many years ago, it was an alley, but the city has never maintained it.
Exactly. It's across 8th Street. It's paved and it's paved the rest of the way south, but.
Because the old F and T tire.
Well, you pull out of the back of F and T and you'd go under that alley.
That's where they used to work on all the cars in the back. It was actually an extension of their shop.
Yeah.
Did you receive any phone calls in this is your district? Anybody concerned? Or, I mean, we're gonna have a public hearing, but there might be people here that might have contacted you. Did you have any?
I haven't had any phone calls. And I think the Masonic Building or the old TBA tires and battery building has fallen down. So that's gonna be a blessing when that comes down. I'm surprised it hasn't fell. Of course, F and T is, is dangerous anyway. But I think by opening up A Street for emergency acts, I think all that's gonna help emergency access for whether it's fire, EMS, police, to get around that facility. So I think it's a win-win deal for everybody.
Jim, are you guys done with the purchase of Masonic?
Masonic's done. That was last Friday after 16 months of negotiations. Yes, that's finished finally.
Have you talked with the city engineer or the?
Yes, last Friday.
When you're gonna bring that building down?
I didn't waste any time.
Okay.
The problem is, the city's concerned and we would be concerned as well, that when they start to bring that building down, they're afraid that there's gonna be damage to the tire, or the car detailing building. So that's why we're gonna move and we're gonna buy that building first part of next week. And then when they bring the building down, if there's damage to that building, we could care less because it's coming down, too. So that's how that's gonna work. We're just, I'm gonna be out of town a lot this week or we would have acquired that building this week as well. So everything's on schedule. I mean, the big, the big holdup on this was getting the Phase 2 environmentals finished on the Masonic Lodge and, and on the car detailing building because they both had to have Phase 2s. But they came back clean and so we're ready to proceed. Now, just to add a few, few more bits of information for you, we're now working on the Phase 2s on readers, cleaners, and those four parcels across the street. We've already worked out a deal with the owners. We had to pay the back property taxes last Monday in order to make sure that property wasn't redeemed at tax sale. So we've done that. And, and we haven't, we haven't entered into a purchase agreement on those four parcels, but we do have a lien against two of the parcels that are taxed, the taxes are paid on. And we'll be drawing up that purchase agreement as soon as we know a little bit more about the remediation issues associated with the property. As, as things happen or go, before that was readers cleaners, it was a gas station. So you got a double whammy. So there's underground tanks along with all the, the chemicals that were spilled on that property over the course of the years. And the only upside to that is the fact that that area, as you know, flooded like crazy. So we, we don't know yet whether that flooding has taken away some of the contamination or not, but we'll find out in the near future. We're just waiting now to, for them to approve the, the removal of the underground tanks. And that'll be the first thing that happens over there. And then we'll, we've already got the attorneys in Indianapolis who are gonna start researching the insurance policies that were on those, on readers properties to determine who's gonna pay for the remediation. That's one thing we're not gonna do, but insurance companies will. And that's why we've brought in attorneys who specialize in that. So the whole process is moving. We're actually talking already to some restaurants or to some potential restaurants for the one that's gonna be in the M Fine Building. And then we hope to put another one across the street on that, the Reader's Cleaner site as well.
I really appreciate you taking in the Reader's Cleaners and going across, because you're really incorporating that into your development. You are cleaning up and icing
the whole block.
You're really improving our downtown.
Yeah. It's, it's taken a while, obviously, but, you know, things are starting to move now. And, and, you know, we'll probably be going out for bids on construction here in the next three weeks or so. But we really realistically don't, don't think we'll be under construction until, worst time of the year, but January, probably.
You do have Industrial Nightmare. I see it's open for business this year.
Yeah, that's a special deal.
Okay, okay.
Get your ticket now, we get a percentage of revenues. I worked out that deal with them because we get 10% back as a donation from all tickets sold. And if.
Well, they had 1,300. Go through less.
Well, I can tell you that all cash, they do somewhere between 750,000 and a million dollars in a Halloween season.
Yep. They really do.
So we're looking for a pretty sizable donation back to us. And as soon as that shuts down, that's October 31st, he starts moving all those things out of there. So the building will be cleaned out in about seven to 10 days after they shut down.
Yeah, well, does council have anything else for attorneys or Mr. Bosley for opening up? Okay. At this time, gentlemen, I'm gonna open up public hearing. If there's anybody here to wish to speak for or against. If there's anybody here who wish to speak for or against the vacating of this unimproved alley between Eighth, Eighth Street and Spring Street, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing none, I am officially closing public hearing.
On that note, I'm going to promote to pass 2015 OR 54.
Second.
Got a motion, second to pass 2015 OR 54. Is there any other questions or concerns? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Mr. Applegate, yours up again for the public hearing, and this is for the zoning change.
Thank you very much.
D2 to a DC.
Housekeeping, Ken, is it possible that I can ask for the testimony given at the vacation hearing that we just had be incorporated into the rezoning? That I put on the record and... So, maybe if I could...
Have a motion, technology.
Yes, sir.
Yes, you can do that. You can do a motion about, to incorporate the testimony. Just wanted to do the presentation on the case, now, incorporate that testimony, that is a percentage of the record.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Got a motion and a double second to incorporate that earlier testimony into this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much. The rezoning, in, in a continuation of the, some of the discussion that we had, this is Downtown Commercial, the M-Fine Building now, the Industrial Nightmare Building now. Let me get that better approximated. We had a favorable recommendation to allow Downtown Commercial, which is what M-Fine is now, but M-Fine also had a variance, use variance. Downtown Commercial says Commercial has to be used on the first floor, residential on the second floor. The variance was for the purpose of allowing residential on the first floor, which predominantly is the M-Fine Building. We decided to match that same variance application and process which we received last week, together with the favorable recommendation. The use variance is BZA, so we've been to the BZA and the Plan Commission. But importantly here, there, a majority of this addition on the subject property will not be residential on the first floor. I think there are three units on the Eighth Street side, but there's going to be retail there and amenities for people living there. The retail will be for folks living there and the public. So, some of that facade work that you saw in the drawings that, you know, the public's going to be able to stop in, restaurant, those kind of things. Then, there's anticipated movie theater, community room, et cetera, that will be in this part of the additional building, which of course, is on the property that we're seeking the rezoning for. And then, finally, to summarize, the purpose of the rezoning is to have all property owned by one entity under, with an identical zoning classification. Your vote would allow that. At this point, all other public hearings and hearings have been had and favorably received.
Public hearing on this one?
Yes, so, does Council have any other questions for open up public hearing? Okay, at this time, I'm going to officially open up the public hearing. If there's anybody who wish to speak for or against the change in this zoning to Downtown Commercial, please come forth, state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to officially close public hearing.
I do have a question before we move. We're talking right now only the west side of Spring. We're not talking about Reader's Cleaners and all that?
Correct.
Literally, the Masonic Building and the F and T.
That's what I thought, just clarifying.
And there's going to be four units on the first floor?
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to pass 2015 OR 55.
Okay, got a motion, a second to pass 2015 OR 55. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those approved, motion carries. Good luck, sir.
Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Julius, finally, your guidelines and principles for consideration of property tax phase-in tax abate. Jefferson, Indiana.
Meeting number seven. I think everybody by now has had time to go through this tax abatement guideline, if you want to call it that, as I presented probably been six weeks ago. And I just, I think it's a good tool that we can keep in our toolbox. I think overall, it will save the city money in the long run. And plus, it gives us the ability to step out of the box and incentivize businesses that we really want to entice to come to Jeffersonville. And we don't need to spend a lot of time talking about this unless somebody has some questions, because I think we've been over it and over it and over it. I don't know how many times, but anyway, that's where we are.
Do you need three reading or two?
Three.
I'll make a motion to pass 2015 OR 56 on the first reading.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion to pass 2015 OR 56 on the first reading. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Kim Calabro, we've got an ordinance fixing the salaries of appointing officers, employees of all the departments of the city of Jeffersonville.
First off, let me just kind of mention, I think you mentioned something about the ACA, the Affordable Care Act, and I don't know who gave the presentation at your IACT meeting. I know Lisa talked to me a little bit on Friday, but Impact, which is the HR group out of IACT, we had our summer conference in August. Ice Miller gave the presentation at ours, so I don't know if you had the same. But this has been on my radar for a year, so we are already, you know, collecting all the data and all the information. I don't know how familiar you are with it, but there's several forms that employers have to submit, not only to the IRS, but to each employee. So, they're very, very comprehensive reporting requirements. I mean, we have to actually, for every employee that has had health care, not only do we have to identify every month of that calendar year that they were eligible, but all their dependents. We have to have social security numbers and dates of birth and full names for every employee and every dependent. So, we have been working pretty diligently for the last year.
I apologize for that, because I was in that workshop.
Knowing that this was going to be coming.
Several of them raised their hand, just told me, said, you know what, we're just going to quit.
Yeah, yeah, so, so.
So, I'm glad you're ahead of that.
Just to kind of ease your mind a little bit, that we've been working on the, I know Amy and I have had several meetings. It's actually on the agenda for, we're having an insurance committee meeting, it's actually on the agenda for Thursday's meeting as well.
Is this Thursday?
Uh huh.
Yes, this Thursday.
Yeah. At 1:00. So, okay, here we go. 2016 proposed ordinance. One of the things that looks really different, I know I've mentioned several of you during meetings over the course of this last year, that we wanted to go ahead and not only alphabetize the departments, but the job titles. So, it looks a little bit different than what we've done in the past. Christine and I have spent probably about two days going through here and comparing this one to our current ordinance to make sure that we have not neglected or not forgotten anybody's title. So, I don't know if we want to go through this department by department and see if this captures and reflects any conversation that we need to have. I don't know how much time you've had to look at it. I don't know what preference you have. Can you start going through department by department?
Yeah, just to tell us the changes.
Okay.
Compared to the budget.
I don't know what the budget is.
Amy, can you assist at all? Because I think there's a, there's something, some in here that's not budget. Got the budget right here somewhere. You can start on page two. Just walk us through what, what you have, Kim.
Okay, on page two, for the public works, has been a title that's kind of always been on there, but since I've inherited the, the salary ordinance, I don't think we've ever had a position in there, so we went ahead and eliminated that. Under city clerk, it's chief deputy city clerk, not office manager. The court clerk and the court clerk traffic will be eliminated January fourth, January 1st. City court, there will no longer be a bailiff, court reporter. Or in city court, the clerical, under the part-time clerical, probation officer, those positions will all go with the closing of the court. Page three, we just tried to have it make a little more sense in fire and police. This is the new base pay for 2016, and then, we just indicated the plus or minus, because before, several people have mentioned that it got confusing with whether or not it was a plus or a minus of the base rate. And then, we alphabetized the positions. My understanding is that we're adding three new firefighters under the, under the ordinance.
Did the base go up, did you add the 3%? Because they got...
I did that based upon what the contract is.
It's clearly written in.
That addendum to the contract, so. And I don't know if Eric, if I had time to look at that. Hopefully, I did the math correct. Actually, Christine and I did that, and I'm not always the greatest, but I think it's correct. Wasn't too hard to figure out. On page four, under Parks and Rec, there have been an addition of two general laborers. And then, recreation programs and aquatic center manager, that is not a new position, that's currently Nikki Dillon, but apparently, her salary is split 52% under Parks and Rec and 48% under non-rever, non-reverting funds. So, that was reflected in here. The bottom, under police and fire, same thing, we just added the base pay, just for easier, easier review of anybody that's taken a look at that. Under patrolman, the addition of three patrol officers. Under sanitation, and if you look at sanitation, you're going to notice that there's a big difference between sanitation and back under motor vehicle. From what I understand, there's been a request to split, apparently, years ago, there was a split with those two. I was asked, I guess apparently, to do that again. So, that's just reflecting that motor vehicle has their own line item, and sanitation has another. Debbie Gardner, who is currently working up there as secretary receptionist, has been upgraded to administrative assistant one. So, we've added that one at a pay grade three, and then eliminated the secretary receptionist. And then, January 1, effectively, we will have a new supervisor of streets and sanitation.
You said we didn't have to add it in for that interim, right now, right?
No, he is still operating, he's a still, he is not in that position.
Okay, thank you.
He's moving from driver-operator?
Yes, January 1, but not now. Right now, he's a CDL driver.
He's been bumped two pay grades?
Page six, there are no changes. Page seven, I don't believe there are any changes. Page eight, it's parks authority board stenographer and not parks advisory. And then, number nine, instead of concession admission workers ice rink, we just kind of blunt them up with concession admissions workers under pool. And then, on page 10, under probationary officer salary, since we no longer have the probation officer under city court, we eliminated that whole sentence, which then changed section 2L and then 2M. And then, just grammatical changes under pay grades, it's a pay grade, not a job grade. So...
And you did add public arts commissioner stenographer, that wasn't in there before, was it?
It was.
What page are you on?
On page eight.
We added that before.
We did, no, we did not. Because there were several emails back and forth. I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention that that's added in there now, because we didn't have that in there before.
I think we did that like several months ago. I think that was like back in June, that we added that.
We've had one, I know that.
We have it, but it didn't reflect in the salary ordinance. I added the 27. I just wanted to make sure Nathan knew that, because I know he has sent several emails.
Well, we were talking about what's there now.
This is 57?
Well, it wasn't funded.
It'll be OR 57?
It should come out, we need to get that out.
It seems like this should match our budget.
Yeah, it should.
I mean, we took out all the clerk, all the court staff because they're not in the budget.
Right.
And I'm not sure, I don't know what else might be in here that is not lined up with the budget. I don't know. It seems like maybe we pass it and say it's got to align with the budget. I don't, I don't know. Could we do that?
We have to have a free reading.
Okay. Okay.
Who can I start to do that?
Why you get the big bucks.
Right.
Good idea.
Okay, so, on the first.
Motion to approve 2015 OR 57. Is that right?
Yes.
On the first and second?
Second.
Okay, you got a motion and a second to pass this on this first and second, although I thought we were just passing the first. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
I have a question. How will I know whether it aligns with the budget or doesn't align with the budget? And if there's positions that are not budgeted, are those going to be eliminated?
Yep.
And does that, does that take a vote, then? Will we have to vote on that?
Well, I mean, we voted on it in the budget.
The budget was just a free, aye. So, I get it. If it doesn't match up, and then, this ordinance, when you pass on third reading, would you have a change in the budget? That's what they just put real, that's what they...
Okay. Okay.
I have a question, Scott. Does the, does the salary ordinance have to match the budget, or does the budget, like, I don't want to talk in a complex here, but, like, there can be, just because it's in the salary ordinance, doesn't mean that that position is funded. So, it could be in the salary ordinance and still not be funded and not be fillable, correct? Didn't we do that before with some positions, where we didn't fund positions, but they still remained in the salary ordinance?
I have to go back to that. All the radio and advantage to that.
Well, I'm not arguing one way or another, but that, that's what we seem to be hung up here, and if it's not funded, it's not funded, so...
But norm, I mean, but normally, you do try to have the budgets and salaries match.
We've not always done it that way, but...
That's the intent, to try to match those. It doesn't necessarily have to be...
I'm not sure when we have it done that, though.
And then, eventually, you all have it.
Yeah.
I mean, some of it should overlap.
Right.
It should be done like that. I don't think that we intentionally got it to be.
You can get with me, and I'll go through all that. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Kim.
Okay, it's Mr. Merkley, but I see Shane is here, so Shane, we will have a public hearing on this. It's the Play Commission Recommendation of Jeffersonville Common Counsel to amend ordinance 2007 OR 68, the Jeffersonville Comprehensive Plan.
Sorry you get me instead of less.
You can see.
Let's see if I can get this fired up. To the back screen as well. Good evening. How's it going? So, I heard that you guys all wanted your own hard copies, so you could read it from cover to cover for a little bit of light reading.
Hey, I did read the whole thing.
Did you?
Thank you very much.
A lot of information. I read it quite a few times myself. I still can't completely call it all, but at any rate, do you just want me to go ahead and get started, or?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, I'm here to present the Jeffersonville Comprehensive Plan update. It recently went through the Planning Commission and received unanimous favorable recommendation to come to you all. So, we've been working on this for over a year, and let's go through a little bit of agenda, what we're getting ready to talk about, you know, why we did the update, the public engagement overview, vision and goals, the elements within the plan, and the implementation. So, I'm not going to go through every single page and every single chapter. I've tried to put together a summary with the consultant here. Unfortunately, they couldn't be here tonight, so I'll do my best to get through it all for you. So, why did we update? The last plan was completed in 2007. This plan was not a complete rewrite. A lot of what's going on in the community is single-family, it's existing, we're not going in and redoing a bunch of zoning for all... going in and redoing a bunch of zoning for all of that. But we do have a lot of areas in the community that are changing and they're changing rapidly, very much for the better. We're getting a lot of growth and investment. So we want to make sure that we updated the plan to try to address that growth before it comes. A lot of this is due to the Ohio River Bridges Project, Big Four, et cetera, all the reasons that you all are familiar with. In addition, to qualify for a lot of grants and other state and federal funding, we have to update this plan. In addition to some of the funding that you saw tonight for the Industrial Nightmare Project, we updated the plan a couple of years ago to allow for that funding to become available for New Hope. So we did a public engagement process, which I think many of you participated in. Started with a visioning workshop in November of 2014. And at that point, that was a big picture. We brought everyone from the community that we could get in. We had a pretty good turnout. I think 50 to 70 people showed up for that. It was pretty cold out, too, so we were happy with that. And that showed us some big picture items of areas within the community that we wanted to focus on and brought out a lot of big ideas. From there, we did smaller focus groups, one with city leadership, one with the 10th Street Business Association, one with the Falls Landing, and then we followed that up with a public open house and presented a lot of the information that we found. So vision and goals are a mandatory part of a comprehensive plan. Vision is sort of the very high-level, inspiring, inclusive, and memorable type things that you want to say about your community. The goals are lofty but achievable, and then you get down into the objectives, which gets you more into the details of how you're going to achieve your goals and vision. So the vision, do you guys want me to read it or have you guys already read through it? Basically, it talks about Jeffersonville being a gateway community, building on arts and culture, and capturing the economic development with strong job base, planned corridors, strong neighborhoods, and distinctive public space. That's the gist of it. Goals go through, talk about planned and deliberate development, revitalization and cleanup of sites existing throughout the community, creating more transportation options, access to economic potential, providing utilities, quality jobs, parks, works, parks, and public spaces, housing, economic development, and creating Jeffersonville or building upon Jeffersonville as a destination place. Go through the elements here. Every plan has a land use element. This is probably some of the biggest tools that I use on a daily basis. We use it every day. What is the zoning of a parcel? Someone wants to bring in a business? Is it zoned appropriately? What are the design standards? So this really lays the groundwork for the zoning ordinance and what we implement. Future land use ties into when you're considering a zone change. When the Planning Commission is considering a zone change, we reference this. We say, okay, does this fit with the vision of the future land use that the plan that we adopted said we were going to do? And Planning Commission considers that upon making a recommendation that would then come to you all, and then you all would have the final say on whether those zone changes go through. And again, that feeds into development plans, design standards, range of uses, and all kinds of things. Major changes in this from the previous plan that we updated is the spine of 10th Street and all the way down into downtown, we said that's going to be mixed use. If developers want to do mixed use, they have the opportunity to do mixed use, whereas opposed, whereas previously, it was all strictly mostly commercial with some multifamily on the backend. And this ties into the zoning that was just approved a few weeks ago, when I came in, maybe a month ago when I was here. This opens up a range of development opportunities to property owners along 10th Street. And we updated the planning districts, which also informs the zoning change process. We looked at turning the areas on 10th Street, previously identified as suburban marketplace to regional marketplace centers, or these bigger boxes and bigger uses that we're going to get around the interchange leading up to River Ridge. We can accommodate those as well as traditional marketplace, again, that zoning that was just passed closer into downtown. So if you think about how development has occurred up along 10th Street, you get these boxes that come in and they're there and they're vibrant while they're new, and then they leapfrog up 10th Street and they leave the old one behind, and then they leapfrog and leave the old one behind, and that's how we've ended up with this pattern of development. And right now, a lot of that's in decline. So as the city has grown and expanded out and neighborhoods have built around it, we now have an opportunity to create sense of place and walkability up along that spine of 10th Street if the property owners choose to use the new zoning to do so. It doesn't mandate that, it just opens up the door to a range of new opportunities. We incorporated existing transportation plans, got this information from Kipta as well as City Engineer, and our Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. There is one element that I need to bring up while we're here. It's one of the only comments that we've gotten on the plan that anyone said they didn't like, and this came from the Port of Indiana, and it had to do with our Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. We included them in the public engagement process back in 2012, prior to adopting that plan in 2013. And what we heard from them was they didn't want any bicycles on their shoulders there because the trucks use their shoulders, they park, they stage the trucks there. They didn't want any bicycles, they didn't want, if people showed up there and rode on them, they weren't obviously going to do anything about it, but they didn't want us to promote it as a bike route. So what we came up with as an alternative was a separate multi-use path off of the road. At that time, they didn't object to it, but they have gone through and looked through this plan, and that piece jumped out to them. And so they wanted, I've got a letter here, I'll put it in the record, they would like to have it removed from the bike pad plan, but they don't want that to slow up the adoption of the plan tonight if you guys choose to do so. They just want it to be part of public record that they do not approve of that specific project.
What piece is that you talked about? What road in particular is it?
Along Port Road.
Port Road?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, on the west side, where they park and bring trucks?
Yes, and the trucks use those big shoulders. And originally, when we looked at that, we thought that was a natural place where if we kept those shoulders clean, we could use them as bike lanes. But they objected to that and said, no, we don't want to mix bikes in with our truck traffic. So they're against it, and so I just want to make sure that's part of public record, and I've got this letter here for that.
Do they, don't, do they own those roads?
They do. I believe they do.
So can we dictate to them that they do this anyway? I mean, I would not...
No, I don't think we can, based on, and I just had a conversation with their director today about it, and he said they've got state statutes and things behind them. And obviously, I don't think we as a municipality will want to force anything down their throat as a partner in the community.
It says Port Road's owned by the State of Indiana. But we cannot dictate to the state what to do.
Yeah.
But it's just, it's just the west side of a road, correct?
Yeah.
Pretty good spread, that's where they, that's where they stage when they go in to unload it or anything.
Yeah. It was a concept that we put in the plan as a long-range idea. We don't have any construction plans to do any of that. We don't have any detail, we don't have any funding for it. So it's something that was...
Years down the road anyway.
If it ever happened, but they wanted to make sure that they just got it in public record, so. Again, more transportation projects that are in the tip, Transportation Improvement Plan with Kipta and the major thoroughfare plan. Looked at community facilities and utilities, parks and recreation, education, cultural amenities, utilities, private utilities. And we looked at Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan and parks. We added the housing element into it. And we looked at some special focus areas, River Ridge Gateway, which I'm happy to announce that, I'll see, I'll read this to you, just found out about this. The Indiana Chapter of the American Society of Landscape Architects ordered the River Ridge Commerce Center Gateway Master Plan, an award of excellence in the analysis and planning category. The award of excellence is the highest honor bestowed at the state level and represents an outstanding advancement in leadership, contribution, understanding, and/or achievement in the field of landscape architecture. This award is not mandatory, reserved for only projects of the highest caliber, and may be awarded to only one project per state per year. Jurors in this year's competition noted the plan's focus on community connectivity, sustainability, and green infrastructure to an innovative approach to public and open space organization, among others, as reasons for the selection. So that's the Gateway Plan that I participated with and my staff with River Ridge and a variety of other stakeholders to create the town center, the campus. River Ridge is new. Yeah, I'm pretty stoked about it. So the press release should officially be coming out in a couple of days, but that is a component within this plan that we reference, so I'm excited about that. Getting the focus areas, Falls Landing, 10th Street, River Ridge, I-265 Gateway, and Veterans Parkway. Did the Downtown Master Plan, some of these projects are ongoing. We wanted to put them all together in a cohesive map for everyone to look at, think through, and how they would all unfold. Some of them still have quite a bit of work to do, especially the Arts and Cultural District. And then we get into implementation. We've got some timetables. Of course, none of these are completely set in stone, but it gives you a framework to think about, direction that you want to go, committees that need to be put together. And then we get into action steps. Once you have your, you've got a direction for the projects that you want to do, and you've got your committees formed, then you can start to bite these things off and push them forward. So all of those things are in the plan. Happy to try to answer anything if I can remember them right off the top of my head. Not, I'll do whatever research I can to get you...
Shane, as we would come up with new projects that should be listed in the plan, is this something that you would include those or we could at any point in time?
Sure.
When those hit, just to keep it current?
Absolutely.
I had a question. On your, on the transportation plane, as you know, that, you know, my district is District Five, and I've been since day one taking this office, have been concerns about Allison Lane, but especially now with the traffic on 62, Allison Lane backs up, backs up into the intersection, even in 62 and 10th Street. I don't see that listed here as...
Holman's.
And Holman's is listed very, like, I'm not, tell you, my district, they don't want to hear about 10th Street, or it's Holman's Lane, which is really not, but it leads to, and Allison Lane. If that's not on this list, is that, does that make a difference? I know these are like guidelines or priority, but...
I can have it...
Is it Kipta?
Pardon?
Is that part of Kipta with Andy?
I would think Kipta would want to be involved with that on some level unless it was going to be fully funded by either the General Fund or a partnership with redevelopment.
Because I know Holman's was on that list, and I believe that it was taken off by the man, so... I just know, because I've, actually, you know, I've had several conversations now even with him, and I've pulled in Senator Ryan Grooms, and I've even talked to our state representative, and because of Allison Lane, as you all know, and we've had to pave that because of the heavy truck, it's not, doesn't support that. The other question I had was, you have 8th Street where it says, you know, about it's going to be, this project is to reconstruct 8th Street? We just had that all paved.
Yes, and I talked about that with Andy. It's in the Transportation Improvement Plan. That doesn't mean that we have construction drawings and a plan like ready to go or that we're getting ready to do it immediately.
I mean, that took a big bulk of our paving money to do 8th Street all the way, and Local Roads and Streets kicked in extra money. Just saying about, oh, we're not going to go...
Is it considered Middle Road as part of 8th Street?
Oh, I'm on page 56, 57. Those are a concern in my district, so I...
But I mean, Middle Road, would they, if that is an extension of 8th, would they call that 8th Street? Are they confusing, I mean, timed?
Well, it was paved from, I mean, all the way down. We did, went to Local Roads and Streets and got some of our money, had it instead of done in phases, had it done all the way down because it was in such a poor shape. Matter of fact, it's been...
Sorry, I'm scrolling through.
...ride a roller coaster down 8th.
Sorry. Trying to jump to, what, 56? I don't know if I can jump straight to it. I don't think I can.
Of course, this is talking to 8th Street to Ring Street to Perrin Lane, but we had a lot of it, or, and of course, a lot of it now, we've had some cave-ins and, but...
Boy, if you think of when this was done from '07, all this really is, it is an update on areas. And if you look at page 17 or 93, if you look at goals, and you go through 1 to 10, promote plan growth, support the revitalization, environmental cleanup, I mean, these are things that were, I would assume, that have been in them all along, haven't they? Shane?
In this plan all along?
Well, in the plans, I mean, provide utilities that adequately serve structure growth. I mean, these are pretty generic.
Pretty generic.
Sure. So, you know, I think, I don't think it's really drilling down into, but anyway, I mean, a comprehensive plan is something that we've always had to have to reach out for grants and different things.
Yeah, I think you said we had to, the state asked us to update this because of a grant.
That's one of the reasons, yes. Yep.
So just because something's not in here does not necessarily mean that if...
No, that doesn't mean a project can't be done or...
Well, and we added something to the last one, what'd we add? Oh, the, wasn't it the...
Housing.
Yeah, that was just here.
Mm-hmm.
We had to amend the last plan to...
Is it changeable during...
It's a moving target.
You can amend it and add additions to it. We didn't have a housing element, and that's when I started working with Jim Bosley and New Hope at that point in time. And the funding that they wanted to get in order to acquire the Industrial Nightmare, the tax credits that they were going to need, that was one of the major line items to score points in the grant, was a housing element. So we produced a housing element, we looked at our current demographics and housing needs, created that, and brought it to you guys, and then we amended the plan and added it in.
And I imagine that this will have to be done again before 2035?
Oh, a couple of times.
Because of the, because of the state laws change, the plan has to change.
Well, I mean, in '07, River Ridge wasn't nearly what it is today, so...
Sure. And I would say in five years, a lot of landscape around the city is going to look a lot different.
True.
So it'll be interesting to see all the dynamics between everything going on.
Right. Did anyone speak up in signing in? About any four of you?
There's no other questions on my motion.
It's a public hearing. Okay, at this time, I'm going to officially open up public hearing. If anybody wants to speak either before or yes, or have any recommendations for this comprehensive plan for the city, step forward, speak clearly into the mic, your name and your address, and we will gladly hear your concerns or pros, cons. Okay, seeing none, I'm officially closing public hearing.
Pass 2015 OR 58.
Got a motion, a second, pass 2015 OR 58. No further discussion. Okay, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Corbin.
Thank you very much. Look for that press release. Not soon. Got it? Thanks.
Do we have a attorney report tonight?
None.
I hope not.
And what? Find him?
Do we have a department head?
I don't have anything. Union President Hurd, if allowed, would like to speak to the council. I don't know if he does it here or...
Oh, we'll do that in public, we'll do that public comment. Sorry, no disrespect, he's not a department head.
All right.
Okay. We will move on to, now we will move on to public comment. Do we have any public?
Well, the only people that signed up were Alan Applegate and Jim Bosley on behalf of the recent...
Oh, okay.
So that was a different... His only presentation.
I won't allow you to speak.
Great, I appreciate it. I'll be real quick.
So just so everybody can get a rundown on what I'm discussing, five months ago, I came to the council and I discussed a safety issue in regards to the staffing of our new aerial apparatus. The council voted 6-0 to approve hiring three new people. That was greatly appreciated. Dennis Julius Maddow, Nathan Samuel were absent, but I had discussed with all of you why I...
The council voted six oh to approve hiring three new people, that was greatly appreciated. Dennis Julius, Matt O, Nathan Samuel were absent, but I had discussed with all of you why I came, right? I expressed the importance of changing the contract at that time, which was, it was in the paper, and we talked about that. And I explained that I would come back to the council to reopen the contract when the new hires were trained, which I did, and that's when I came to the Finance Committee meeting for a week or so ago. And the reason that I waited to come back was because the folks weren't trained yet, and in order to, if we opened the contract and implemented a new staffing for people that we had that weren't trained, then it would require overtime, and we didn't want to burden the city at all, so we wanted to wait until they were trained, and now they're trained. And that's why I came back at this time. And then I came to the Finance Committee meeting, which I was advised to do so by some of the council, and I had the verbiage of the contract, the proposal that I would have liked you all to entertain. And I was told that, basically, that it wasn't a good time to open the contract now, but that we could address it later. So I'm actually just wanting to see if there's been any further discussion on that issue in regards to the safety of the men and women that I work with, as far as whether or not we were talking anymore about opening the contract. I mean, if not, I need to, I need to know because I need to start addressing other issues to maybe try to. Sure. You got it? Sure, and it was just.
Because he wasn't at the.
Sure, and that's why I kind of wanted to run down real quick. So the whole idea was, councilman, was to open the contract up because our staffing is laid out in our contract. It says how many personnel will be on each apparatus. Well, these are new apparatus, so they require a new number of, one extra person, one, only one of the apparatus now does, but, and I explained all that a few months ago. So, and we did get the people. So all I was coming back for was to say, okay, now we need to please reopen the contract so that we can ensure that from here on out, that the safety issue has been addressed. Sure, and actually, in regards to the Finance Committee meeting, actually Chief Hedrick came with me. I actually ran, worked with him in proposing the verbiage, and he approved of it, I approved of it, and we were asking that the contract be reopened, and he. Well, sure. And that was brought up, and. Sure, and the whole, and the concern of the union is, maybe the next guy won't. The contract, the contract ensures our safety, as you know. Sure, well, then we should be, are we good?
Well, and they asked me as the attorney on this.
Yeah, I know they did, yeah.
I tell you, I believe the easiest and cleanest way is through the SOP, not reopening the contract. So I, they took my advice on that, where I believe it should just be an SOP issued by the chief.
I know, and I.
Broke the contract on such a, you know, matter that I don't think really needs to be addressed, they're reopening the contract.
Well, we have elections coming up. I understand. But my job's not to, my job's not to just say, okay, my job's to say, does that meet the safety requirements that I hoped for for the personnel of the fire department? Unfortunately, it doesn't, because we do have elections coming up. Well, because SOPs change as administrations may or may not change.
Administration agrees to something and the union disagrees with something. If you come into a situation, you file a grievance against administration.
Sure.
To follow the process, that is the process. I don't understand, I think to me, you've got what you ask for. The chief has said that he will do an SOP wherever takes the satisfied form on the ladder, where every truck. So I don't understand.
Okay.
I mean, I guess.
So is it the council's stance that we don't need to open the contract for this issue?
Well, I mean, you know, we're not going to do a contract negotiation at a public meeting, but.
Well, I know.
But historically, you know, those issues are not, contracts are not reopened unless there's usually one of the mandatory reopen issues.
Right.
And it's going to be expiring soon, so next year, there's going to be more reopening for the next term of the contract. Unless your issue can be handled by an SOP. My advice was, that's what historically has been done through SOPs on issues like this. It's not contractual matter on something like this. SOPs is the best way.
And our staffing is a contractual matter.
But on this detail, this is, this is a different, than the typical.
And I get it, but this is an unforeseen issue.
Well, Joe, the only thing that, that I want to do, and I'm the one that asked you to come to the finance meeting because I wanted to get some of that discussion out on the table instead of in a public forum.
And me too.
Well, I mean, that, I think that's logical. And one thing that I think you'll see that the council did was, we addressed your, in my opinion, your safety issue. We all unanimously said, hey, if that's an issue, nobody was aware of it when, when that truck went up to be redone. I don't even think you guys were aware of it. When it came back, you brought it to us, there was no questions asked. We said, hey, if it's a public safety issue that requires another man on that truck, let's fill it, unquestionably. The thing is, on the, on the, opening the contract, and we did, we went to Scott, I've talked to you four or five times about it.
Yes.
And when the chief came into the meeting and said, hey, we're all on the same page, I'm willing to do an SOP, then when the attorney said, you know, let's, let's do that because the contract gets open next year.
Well, seventeen.
Yeah, well, we're almost to the end.
Sure, so, if I might, though, just to be proactive, which I think we all would like to be proactive, there's a new truck coming. It has the same exact safety standards as the truck that we're talking about now. With an SOP then, okay, so we would require three more people for that truck, which I explained five months ago.
And I think we agreed in our, in our budget, we've been to hire the three additional.
Yep, it's in the budget, to hire January one.
Perfect, that's perfect.
So I think we've, we've tried to accommodate what.
I would like to make a comment, if it's okay.
The clerk would like to make a comment.
Sure.
The one thing I ask is, the SOP, if you would give it to me, it'll be scanned in and put in public documents, and I'll also make a file with it, because a lot of times SOPs are done, I'm not giving them. And that is one way, so when you all get ready to go back into your negotiations, it's in public documents, and it will be able to also, anything you all need, we'll be able to access it for you. I mean, and I'm just saying, anytime you all have any change, if you want it, we can do that.
Right.
I mean, that way, you can see it.
I understand, okay, so, I mean, the union's stance is still, we want the contract to be reopened to ensure this staffing is concrete. So I just wanted to make sure that I was clear with that. Thanks.
Thanks, Joe.
On that, Lisa, is, as I discussed, we, we are in the process of drafting the SOP. Those guys will be officially trained, they take their final test, I want to say October nineteenth, if that's a Monday. So they'll be ready to go the twentieth. At two, yes, at two.
So you don't have the SOP ready on the nineteenth?
The SOP will be ready before then, yeah. It'll be approved by, through the Board of Public Works, like all the SOPs have been.
Again, could I get a copy of the bill?
Yes, it'll be at the Board of Public Works and voted on, and I'll give you a copy.
We go to council comment.
Pardon? I said she doesn't have a comment from the Board of Public Works.
Councilperson Smith.
No, I just read Amy as the true, our health insurance went up ten percent, and our medical and vision went up ten percent. I read that somewhere, is that, is that accurate, or is that not to be decided yet?
No, the, the health insurance has gone up ten percent for sixteen. The vision, I think, went up ten percent, and dental went up six.
Six percent?
Yes. I can't remember if it's dental or vision, one of them went up six, one of them went up ten. But it was all estimated.
Councilperson Wasmore.
Nothing.
Councilperson Sellers. Councilperson Julius.
I've got a couple of things. First of all, I appreciate everybody supporting that tax abatement thing, I think that's going to be a big, a big tool in our toolbox. And I think we will have other municipalities adopt that same one in our local area. The other thing that I wanted to bring to everybody's attention this afternoon, or this morning, I guess, there was an accident here at the port house, and one of the mowing crews, somebody had thrown a dipstick into the grass. And one of the mowing crews didn't see it and sent it through Ms. Conlin's window.
Oh, mine.
I'm just saying, when you throw debris in a lawn, it becomes a deadly weapon, it really does.
I think on my car it broke it, otherwise it would have gone through my office window.
A dipstick out of a car was pulled out and thrown into the grass. So I mean, it became a flying object at a high rate of speed, you can imagine. So I just want to, want to say that we have got to be, you know, studious. If you see a piece of metal laying in a, in a lawn somewhere, think of what, what that's, that could have really been tragic. Really tragic. We got the call, and we got them down to Vicki, you know, got to take care of it. I'm telling you, that could have been, that could have been big, real big, so, anyway, that's it.
Councilperson Owen.
I'm okay.
Councilperson Samuel.
Just one thing, tomorrow night at six o'clock, we have the dedication for the, the art that's on top of the Floodwall mural building that stores the, the gates for the Floodwall underneath the Big Four Bridge. And that's at six o'clock, and there's going to be just a real short comments, dedication, whatever. And then we're going to have a drone that's going to take a picture of whoever's there, so we're trying to get a crowd there to wear bright shirts, and it's going to be used to kind of welcome people to Jeff, because that's what the sign on the top says, so. That's tomorrow night at six o'clock, and that's all I have.
I'm starting to sound like a broken record here, but I send out numerous emails, and we had three things come up tonight that emails have gone out about, so I guess if I don't get a reply back to emails, I'll have to start calling you guys or tracking you down, so. I think it's just important, especially now we're wrapping things up towards the end of the year, is, I know we get a lot of emails, but especially if you see one from the council president, please, please respond back to me.
One, I answered, it was confusing about that, less than about a.
Oh, I answered that.
Yeah, personnel or something, and then it went back.
With the salary ordinance, well, that's not the one, which was the twenty-five thousand, the Honeywell, and I can't remember now what the third one was, but. And then that leads me to the Honeywell. I spoke, I tried to get ahold of Andy this afternoon to discuss not only the vacate and some issues downtown, but I know there were several emails back and forth, did, did he answer your question okay with the Honeywell? I think you had several, Andy, I know he answered it late today. But I guess we just need to know, do we want to move forward with the workshop, hear what they have to say and make that decision? Or if there's not the support there, then let's not waste.
I think we need to have the workshop to determine if it's worth going forward.
So is everybody okay then with scheduling a workshop before our council meeting, October nineteenth, for five thirty? Is that okay with everyone? And I will notify Astani and Councilperson Webb. Okay, can you advertise that, please, Mr. Lewis?
Yes, I will agree to that.
And as, thank you. As Ms. Conlin said, we did go to IAC training, I attended a lot more workshops than these lightweights over here. But some of them were, some of them were, no, just, oh, okay. Well, of course, you know, my interest in public safety, there was, there's, there's some very good workshops. And then there were some that, which actually, we were very frugal, Ms. Conlin and I actually had a conversation with the president of IAC and several attorneys that put on, I know that the TIF one could have, I was wanting more information, especially on that new state statute, so I did set up some private time with the attorney, that Sandra, she is the expert in TIFs. I also had one-on-one with the State Board of Accounts, our audit should be released here any day now, so that was a good thing. And I did discuss in length the issues that we have with the budget, especially the revenue issue of the three million, and had that discussion, and I'm bringing back from State Board of Accounts, as you all know too, with, I also talked with Dan Jones with the DLGF, and he actually was impressed that we do our due diligence here, so I just wanted to pass that on, that appreciate all y'all's hard work, and Amy and Heather, I know this budget was, was intense, so I appreciate everybody's work on that. And also, I was asked to attend a meeting with the Port of Indiana, they had what's called, they participated in the site readiness by Duke. And I was invited to, they got the report back, and I could say that the sites up there in the port, they got high reviews, there's only some minor issues with utilities, to get a utility ready, as you know, several of them up there leased out to farmers. To get those sites, you know, with the utilities, to get them site-ready, but they got high marks on that, which is good for the city of Jeff, because we hear a lot from River Ridge, but we really don't hear much about what's going on up at the port. And they were so, so impressed with the high honors that Duke went ahead and gave the port a check for ten thousand dollars just for them to start getting their sites ready and get in touch, and they want to expand the rail. They still haven't heard anything on the Tiger grands, you all know that we sent a letter of support on that, so. We got, with the River Ridge and the port, we, we're really in good shape here in the city of Jeff, to have those two wonderful assets. And I would appreciate if, as you all are looking around the city, I know with, with the streets, the ones that are being done and ones that aren't, we have some contractors that are very neat, they do a good job, and we also have some that, not so much. I'm getting a lot of complaints of, you know, even some work that's being done on 10th Street by the auto auction, a lot of, a lot of motorists, a lot of calls on the dust and the dirt that, and debris and the trash that's being, and a lot of it has to do with, I guess, some lawn care services. I'm getting a lot of complaints on that, and it's on city, it's not on city property, but it's planning and zoning has certain ones where they're, we're trying to find out if they're, who's doing it or who's not doing it, but grass being blown, and then they're going over trash. And, I mean, we're getting a lot of, into our, I guess, our drainage ditches, which leads me to another thing. When you're sitting here in the fifth district, and I'm with people that are still out of their homes, and I go by and I see campaign signs in the drainage ditches, I'm not too happy about that, especially since we brought this up two weeks ago, and the signage has gotten worse and not better. So it's very hard coming up 8th Street, where all 8th Street flooded, people are still there, and Loma Vista are out of their homes, and coming up 10th Street to see those signs in the drainage ditch, so. I'm going to ask, Mr. Lewis, you are the attorney for the Drainage Board, I don't know if we can get with planning and zoning, the drains or something, but those signs need to be removed, because I know in my neighborhood alone, a big piece of plywood totally blocked our seventy-two inch pipe. We had numerous homes that were flooded, they lost everything, cars, they lost their cars because a piece of plywood, and some of those signs are huge, and there's a whole row of them right in the drainage ditches, so. I couldn't let this not go by without expressing my concern about that. I know everybody wants to get elected, and we want to get our signs out, but we got to be responsible, because if you're responsible for flooding somebody in my district, it's not going to be pretty. I'm just saying, it's hard for people to be out of their homes.
Zoning or whomever, just put whatever you want to do, if you give somebody, you know, somebody's got a sign, they get a letter, they don't take them down. I say charge five dollars, sign ten dollars for a big one, and.
And then all it takes is for one to put it somewhere, and the next thing you know, you have a whole, you got a whole row of them, and, which I understand, I mean, I even realize the drainage ditch is there, but when you're straddling a drainage ditch, but I'll get off my soapbox there, but it is disheartening when I have so many that have suffered in my district because of that alone, so. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Me adjourn.